I'd like to call this meeting of the Dalton Select Board to meet please. All those who are able, please stand for the pledge. And Edward, would you lead us to the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, I have town manager, John Alto.
Here.
Joseph Denver.
Yeah.
John Wohl.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
And Edward Holland.
Here.
And missing Mark Schramm.
He's excused. Okay. Next on the agenda is minutes from February 10.
Hey, I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything.
Does anybody have a chance to read? Motion to accept.
Yep. The chairman, I move that we accept as presented the minutes of the Dalton Select Board meeting on February 10.
I wasn't here, so.
Uh, second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye abstained.
Okay. The public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item or listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on any of the items on the board? Dan?
Yes, Dan Filio, 36 Shivers Drive, if I may. Item 7, the draft annual town meeting warrant.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, we'll go to item 6, budget reviews and planning and budget updates. Mr. Kent.
Okay, well, John Roughly is here with us tonight. We mainly have highway department budgets. We'll start with both and then we can discuss the other budgets. So as usually, you've got the schedule of budget reviews and you've got the overall town budget as it stands, including these budgets that you're going to be reviewing tonight. We'll start first with budget number 244, sewer weights and measures. As you all know, worth reminding that the Sealer, John Roughly has been appointed Sewer weights and measures. It's not part of the highway, part of superintendent's jobs. He agreed to take that on several years ago when a former sealer vacated, retired. There's simply the 2% increase and no increase in expenses, the 2% increase we accorded to all our town employees.
Any questions on that? Okay. TA?
Yeah. Next is, it'll be 296, tree warden. Again, there's no change in expenses except for the 2% increase for all our employees. Johns, I'm going through this, please. Adam, you get up your leg.
It's a thankless job, John. Trust me on that. Anyone?
Good.
Okay, TA?
Next one is the biggest of the highway department budgets, and that is the highway budget itself. And I want to point out, you almost have to look at this with 440, which is sewers, because salaries, in the past, what we used to do is have the total salaries and the highway budget, then we have a, we subtract an amount, and that would appear over in the sewer budget. I think last year, for the first time, we actually allocated between the two budgets. So you have a portion of several salaries that show up in the sewer budget. Last year, we saw a big decline from the year before, and that was because we did the allocation. So what you'll see is, on the bottom line, is $1,100 in expenses and two very minor changes. Another $1,000 for signs, especially the electronic signs, we need to repair those, the flashing signs we have. And then we've agreed to pay more money for uniforms, uniform records, to our highway employees. And then you'll see a little over 2% change for the salaries. Anything like that on this budget, John? It's a big one.
No, I think you described it. The only thing was the signs that really added to the expenses, so.
Did you ever find all the signs that were missing in town, all the street signs?
No. No, we just ordered new ones.
No, no word. Be on me.
Well, we, I mean, we had a lot of the Housatonic street signs blew down, so we had quite a few of them. We were just waiting in brackets.
Okay. Any questions or comments for John?
Yeah, it's a quick question. And the highway, yeah, the highway, 420, third item down, foreman salary. Now, is $2,000 less than it was last year? Is that because there's a new foreman and a reduced step?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I think TA?
Next, we have apartment 423, snow and ice. And opposing no change in that budget, remember, that's one of the budgets we can over expend and never actually know what we're going to spend from year to year, but we usually run about $30,000 over that budget. We don't want to increase it too much because it's a budget that we have to continually fund at the same amount if we want to be able to over expend it, so we typically don't fund it right up to what we think we may need.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to 420 for a minute?
Sure.
John, just a quick question. I just jumped out of the, vehicle repair and maintenance, looks like in FY19, actuals went to $33,000 with a budget of 16. And when FY20, with a budget of $16,461, we're already $16,200. Should we be putting more money in that?
Um, well, our most expensive truck, that we've been putting money into, we're retiring this year because we have a new one on the way. We actually have two new trucks on the way. So I think we're doing our, we'll be doing all right.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, you all set?
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so, back to snow and ice. And this is a budget, again, we can over expend. We're not asking for any more money in this budget. It's a budget we can over expend. It will run over about $30,000. You don't want to fund it too highly because then it's, you can cut it back, but then you can't over expend it according to the state law to govern.
So far, it's been a new little year or so.
Yeah, newly low so far.
Yeah. Watch out for March.
John, where do we stand? I mean, are we running out of bad average, or are you looking forward to a big deficit, or?
Right now, we're going pretty good. We got about $30,000, I believe, just under $30,000 still in the account, so, like you said, watch out for March.
Yeah.
Mr. Borah, will you knock on wood, please?
That's actually plastic cover, so.
I was on my lawn today. Is that all right?
Could've.
Could've. This is ice, not ice.
Okay, TA, any questions? TA.
Okay, the next one is 440, sewer. You can see the allocations there. We spoke about part of the superintendent's salary, the administrative assistant foreman, and two operators. So that is, salaries, it's up about a little over 2%, and no request for change in expenses.
Are you good?
I have one item, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss with everyone. I just got this late this afternoon. We called, asked for to look at drainage repairs in the Orchard Avenue Pease Road area. And we had a proposal last, we had a proposal last year, but I thought the proposal was high because we were not taking, we were taking, doing both stages, stages of the engineering part of the project as if we were going to build it. So I asked John to get back to SK Design and give us proposals just for phase one, to get us through the preliminary design, the design up until they can give us a good cost estimate for construction of the project. And that's what we have. And I was going to bring this to you tonight as a, as a project, as a capital improvement project for the next fiscal year, but I think we can sneak it in our engineering budget this year, maybe with a small reserve fund transfer, so.
That'd be huge, yeah.
If we move it forward.
Yeah, if you can get that fixed up there, that's a.
Is this an accurate figure, Ken? That the cost of construction of this project would be $725?
No, that, that's just a construction cost estimate at the end of this design process. So.
I, so we clarified it, I'm sorry.
We don't know what the cost of construction is going to be. This will get us to the cost of construction with an accurate estimate based on the research and what they're going to do.
Okay, so the total budget figure is exclusive of construction costs?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is going to get us an accurate, accurate construction cost, that's what.
And your, and your recommendation that we authorize this right now and try to take it out of the engineering budget?
Yeah, I was going to do it as a capital improvement project for the next fiscal year, but I looked, took a look at our engineering budget. I think we can get it done this year and maybe the small reserve fund transfer if you'd like to continue to move forward with it.
I think so. Does Borah have the ball running?
I don't think so.
No, I think it's good.
I just wanted, you know, let you know, or.
I appreciate it getting it done because it's a mess up there, and it's been, I know, John, you've been trying like crazy to get it done, and it's just like, wow. The whole area drains to that one person's backyard, and it's like a swamp.
Yeah, and it's down Orchard Road and on Pease Avenue.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Thank you, Kent. Good to know.
The next budget is 491, cemetery. And finally, you'll see that it's actually a slight, so it's very slight reduction in salaries and no request for increasing expenses.
Any questions? TA?
Okay, I think this is the final highway, this is the final highway budget tonight. Parks and maintenance. So you'll see there's a very small increase in salaries, no request for increasing expenses. John, we split one guy between the departments, and this one, do we split a guy here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
John, are you full, actual staff now?
Yeah. Well, we're down, we're still down to mechanic.
Right.
Okay.
Which that adds going out.
Yeah, we're going to try to get out the sweep.
As far as highway personnel will be fully staffed. Hope to go into this spring fully staffed and safe.
Yeah. Beautiful. Okay, TA?
Ken, just a quick question.
Absolutely, Ken.
Ken, did your department ever mow part of the leisure field up there in return for they letting us use it?
No.
They didn't keep up with discussions with the CRA people about, maybe it was somebody else, a private party, whatever, mowed it. But I was told they were authorized to use a certain field up there, I don't know if it was baseball, softball, or what, in return that they mowed the field.
No, there, well, there was some, every once in a while, they'll ask us to rototell it, with the baseball field and the softball field. So when we're doing the other parks, if, you know, if we have time, they'll go up and rototell it. But we don't do any mowing or anything extra.
Must have been somebody else. Then they discontinued it, but they're maybe trying to get it reinstated because there's a definite need for a playing field. All right, thanks.
Haven't had any requests for mowing.
Okay. Budget's 650, TA?
Okay, I'll look through the others. I'll go in numerical order. The next one is 171, conservation commission. And I'm indebted to our chairman for helping me work on this budget. So there's, we just juggle the expenses, very, very small amount, look at the expenses, and there's no change or any request for funding.
TA?
And following that is the development industrial commission. And again, there's no change in the request for funding, it's $1,300.
TA?
By far, the biggest, biggest budget you'll see tonight is that for the Central Berkshire Regional School District, and this is based on their tentative budget. It's not the final budget. And we usually decompose the school district budget into three warrant articles. One is for operating expenses, second is for transportation, which when we get the school district budget, they're combined, and the third is for capital expenditures, of course. Capital expenditures are up, we know it's going to be up because of the high school. The operating expenses are up about 4%, and the transportation expenses are off slightly.
So they're up about a million and a half?
Yeah.
Wow. We're going to present this tomorrow night, I do believe, at the Subtown Advisory.
I'm glad you brought the Subtown Advisory Committee tomorrow in public hearing on Thursday, both at 7 o'clock and at Nescus.
Uh, 6:30 tomorrow.
6:30 tomorrow?
Yeah.
Joe and I are attending now and tomorrow.
Great.
So TA for now.
And then we'll change this in the final budget system. Okay, next we have board of health, and our health agent couldn't be with us this evening. He's responsible for two budgets, and I hope he'll get it here, so the public health nurse, 510, is board of health, and 522 is public health nurse. You'll see that that, there's no request for increasing expenses. Salaries are up about 4%, and that's due to the fact that we accorded an extra hour, the 2% plus the extra hour for all of our employees.
Guys, are any employees that are paid under the salary line item besides Mr. Fahey?
No, just Mr. Fahey. Mr. Fahey. Then you'll see down below, we've got $5,000 in there, that's for the recycling program, the new recycling programs, education enforcement coordinator, that's our match to the state grant. That person's, will be a contract employee, that's what's planned, and we'll be advertising fairly shortly for that. Now, I'll just go through the public health nurse, and then I'll have some other comments. Public health nurse, we have our public health nursing services through the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission's Berkshire Public Health Alliance, and that's our quote for the next fiscal year, which is a little over 2%, you know, only $140 more than it is this year. And they do all the required public health work. And you can, if you look, there's a scope of their services attached to it.
TA?
Now, what I want to tell you about both of these is Ed Fahey, after almost 18 years here, has taken another position, has taken a position with the Berkshire Public Health Alliance.
Really?
Yes. He'll be leaving at the end of the week, in a couple of weeks. So right now, I'm looking at interim health agent services, and so that we can get the job out there and hire a new person. He's going to work for the Berkshire Public Health Alliance, identifying Jack with 18 years on, let everybody know. I had a meeting with, you know, Ed and one of the members of the board health this evening. Something more next week. So we're going to try to get someone, Ed recommended somebody to me, I've interviewed her, and she's very well qualified, and we'll fill in in the interim, probably a couple days a week, probably for the next couple of months.
Okay, does that job require a registered sanitarium?
Um, you have to be registered within a certain period of time. The person here is a registered sanitarium, so you see, there's all the qualifications that you need.
If you take the job and you're not, you have to be after a certain period of time.
Yeah. This is what we did when we hired Ed Fahey, he was not registered, but we gave him like a year of his registration.
Can I bring this up, though?
Yes. So, we prepared a certificate of appreciation for Ed, appreciation of his 18 years of service to the town, and wish him well, and we hope you will approve of that certificate.
Yes, I'll just read it quickly. Town of Dalton, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation. The select board of the Town of Dalton, on behalf of the citizens of Dalton, hereby extends their sincere appreciation to Edward M. Fahey for his 18 years of dedicated service to the town as his health agent. And we're going to sign it by the select board, but I just want to add a personal note. I worked with Ed many times on the Conservation Commission, and he was always there for us. He was very good to work with. He's, from our viewpoint, he's going to be very sorely missed, so. And I know a lot of the other people in town loved him, so that's going to be a big hole to fill. Thank you, Ed. Sign this. I guess I have the pen, so you can put it in here. Okay, Kent.
Okay, the final budget I have here this evening is employee fringe benefits, 919. A major increase in this budget is due to the change in policy to allow employees to be paid for two weeks of unused vacation. Remember, it was one week, now it's up to two weeks, so we may have allowance for that. There's a very small increase down below, it's only $14, but it's worth noting because, you know, as a result, you may remember that motor vehicle accident, that horrific accident that happened, I think in Massachusetts, and so many had their vehicle, their CDL license lifted in Connecticut. From now on, everybody with a CDL license has to be checked through the federal government, and we have to do that as well with our CDL drivers. It's a minor.
How many CDL licenses do we have?
On every, every highway.
They all have?
We all have CDLs, yeah.
Okay, TA?
You can see where we are, we'll follow along in the process on the first page. We've got two more weeks of lots of budgets, and then we'll catch up with any stragglers on the 16th of March. And we've done, this is slightly wrong, because we did 919, and we didn't have it up on February 24th, so that's done. There's no major changes on the summary budget. There are really no major changes at this point. What we have is at least the tentative school district budget in here. So there's nothing new or unusual, except the tentative school district budget, which I don't think we've seen, and how it impacts our, the overall budget.
Okay. Any questions for Kent on this?
Ken, on, uh, excuse me, on March 18, you had 919 employee benefits.
Yeah.
Ken, cross that out?
Yeah, cross that out. I didn't catch that when I was putting this together. Moved it up to 24th because I don't got it done.
Any other comments for Kent?
Do you want to move over that? Yeah. Again, on the summary budget, the only, the only, all of the budgets that you reviewed tonight are incorporated in this budget, including the tentative school district budget. So we want to cut to the chase, go to page five, and you can see what the bottom line is.
We're all there for some reason.
So far, given what we have, and it's far from final, it looks like we're looking at a 7% tax increase, or about $300 for the average homeowner.
This is as opposed to what was measured during the referendum campaign of tax rates, increase in Dalton of 6 to 650.
Yes.
So we've been able to cut it back to judicious?
Well, right now, right now it is, but we haven't seen all the budgets yet, but the school district budget, of course, is the major.
And you figured it already, figured it in here?
It's in now, tentative budget, and it usually goes down from the tentative figure.
Yeah, so it just could be even less.
We have highway, we have police department, so it's about 650.
This includes the new school, correct?
Yes.
So what you're saying here, through, most of all the big budgets are already in, the schools are already incorporated.
Highway's in, police department's in.
Police department, highway.
We don't have health insurance in, but I don't expect major increases in health insurance.
So through judicious management and operation, you've been able to reduce the projected $600 tax increase down to $300.
Down to $300.
Kent, that's great work, and it's good for the public to know.
Yeah, it really is good.
It could be even lower before we get done.
More rotators.
Get it down under 300.
That'd be cool.
Couldn't they have the town managers?
Yeah, that'll do it. Take a big whack out of it.
Yeah, that's great, that's great news, Ken.
Okay, any other questions on the budget for Kent? I'd like to move over to item 7, the draft ATM warrant.
There you go, I'll have the first round, promising that's it in my schedule. I'll go through the articles quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. Now, remember, you can place these warrant articles in any order that you want, and just throw them on there, kind of in the usual order, especially the financial articles, anything that's new, just simply because I had it compiled in my file for this. So article one is the petitioned article we had, submitted by 40 registered voters to change the location of voting in Dalton from the, from the CRA to the senior center.
Ken, just to go on record, we have had private conversations, I know the chairman's talked to you, this is an advisory question. It is not binding.
It should be. I mean, we'll have council review this, but from my review of the law, particularly chapter 54, section 24, it's the select board's determination as to where voting takes place.
I think it's a good thing to get out there right off the bat and not say it after, after a vote.
Right. And when I write up the explanations of the articles, and I typically don't do it for petitioned articles, but I will make a note on that once town council confirms that that's the case, so people won't understand it's advisory.
Okay.
The second article, as you'll remember, one of our residents came to us and said he thought, because he had a service animal, that our bylaw was incorrect, and we sent it off, his question off to town council, and indeed, our bylaw needed some amending to bring it up to date with our Massachusetts statutes, and here is, the whole bylaw is in there as article two. Article three, you'll remember, we spoke with historic commission, and they wanted to have two historic districts. However, I have a question about this because I don't see any requirement in state law that historic districts have to be approved by the. historic districts have to be approved by the town. I think all we need to do is have it in the budget of the Historic Commission. But if you want it as a separate article, even if it's an appropriation, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see some costs and what it's going to take.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have any budget numbers I can ask. So I have to leave it up in the air.
Is there more, more language in these articles to define what that means?
Yeah, that's what I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I've heard things in some towns where people can't paint their house a certain color.
That's right.
And it really, there are some people who feel it's their house.
There's a gentleman, there's a homeowner in Western Massachusetts, over in the Springfield area, that the home, it needs to be, needs to come down, but because it's a historic home, it can't come down. So what are the limitations of a historic district, really needs to be clear before...
Exactly, correct, yes, really, yeah.
So, we have a, as I understand it, if you have a historic district commission, you establish one of those, and that's when you get the stringent regulations about what you can do. We do have a historic district, now the Cranesville Historic District, and it doesn't obligate anybody in that district to do anything, but Joe's right, you know, we would explain, explain that carefully in the explanation of articles, if we want to do that, so people understand what the requirements are.
Ken, if, we had this commission, if this passed, and this commission started writing stringent, obnoxious, detrimental regulations for the townsfolk, could the Select Board dissolve that commission?
Well, as I understand it, the Historic Commission doesn't want to create a historic district commission, they just simply want to create a district that's historical.
In name only, so to speak.
Yeah, well, you have to do a certain amount of documentation.
Yeah, but they can just call it a historical, but they don't actually do anything. As far as changing regulations or changing rights of homeowners or businessmen.
Right. It's my recollection, when we did the Cranesville Historic District, it didn't impose any regulations on the homeowners within that district. Merely designated that area of town as being of historic significance.
I mean, I agree with the rest of the board, I think they're very concerned about that, possibly leave that happening.
I'd like to put that on a future warrant, a future agenda item, to have somebody from the Historical Commission come in and give us an update on this, and how this is going to work before...
And the actual cost of getting registered. We might want to get a legal opinion, too.
That, too?
Yeah, when we scan the articles, we'll do that, if you decide you want to keep this on.
Okay.
Thank you. Article Four, you're, I forget what the, the folks who are building the large solar array up, you know where that is, up in back of the, the gravel pits there, truculent gravel pits, have asked us to consider a pilot payment as a negotiated tax agreement for a period of time. They haven't given us any proposal yet, but I put it on there for your consideration.
What was a payment in lieu of taxes being? Taxes are a payment. You mean, they're going to give us cash instead of paying taxes, the way most people do?
Well, most of the value in these, as I understand it, most of the value in these projects is in the personal property, there's the solar array on it, and one of the advantages of having a negotiated tax agreement is that it makes it more secure to collect those taxes, than him simply having, they can default on the personal property taxes, and it's rather hard to collect, that's what I understand, but we have to talk to council about that. We have to see what they want, I mean, it shouldn't be our objective is to make sure that the negotiated agreement is as close to full fair cash value as possible, you know?
I mean, I heard of services being donated in lieu of taxes, a payment, I mean, the payment, with the payment, it sounds like they're aiming for a lower cash payment than...
They might, they might be. I haven't, you know, they have, they said they haven't given us proposals, so I don't know what that might be.
Yeah, okay.
So we have three weeks to improve, to approve the warrant articles, so we need more detail on a couple of these, yeah.
Yeah.
So you need a legal opinion of that, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get done, you can tell me what you want to see more on, and I'll focus on. Okay, Articles Five through Seventeen are the typical money articles, and the first is on revolving funds, we have to, we used to have to approve the revolving funds every year, now it's part of our bylaws, and we simply have to approve the spending in those revolving accounts, as we have money coming in and going out, like the fees we collect for transportation or the services at the Senior Center. Article Six is the Schedule of Compensation for Elected Officials, which is required to be voted every year. Article Seven is the Town Budget. Article Eight is the grant, annual grant of the CRA to recreational purposes around the town parks. Article Nine is the Operating Budget of the School District. Article Ten, Article Ten is the Transportation Budget of the School District. Article Eleven is the Capital Budget of the School District. Article Twelve is the Reserve Fund, the money that's appropriated, the Finance Committee controls, so that we can deal with cost overruns during the fiscal year, unexpected expenses. Article Nine is the money that we appropriate to reduce the expected tax rate increase, and that's $200,000, it's on the table for that. Article Fourteen is the money we've been transferring every year from the landfill monitoring account to landfill closure account, that'll run out in a number of years, but we've been doing that. It's leftover bond proceeds money. Article Fifteen, this should say fiscal year twenty, if we need, Article Fifteen is if we need a transfer in the reserve fund for this fiscal year, we do it under Article Fifteen. Sometimes that happens. Article Sixteen is the annual appropriation to the stabilization accounts, general capital, litigation, and sewer stabilization. And Article Seventeen is the OPEB, the money appropriated to the other post employment benefits trust fund. Article Eighteen is, we need to annual reauthorize our employment agreements with the highway cemetery superintendent, the foreman, and the police sergeant, because state law doesn't provide for any more than annual agreement. Article Nineteen is the warrant article for, sometimes we have bills that come in at the end of the fiscal year, or misplaced, and we have to have an actual town meeting vote to pay them. Article Twenty, you can see it's very perfunctory, but right now, you remember, the school committee has off, has voted an amendment, proposed amendment to the regional agreement, and that has to go on to annual town meeting warrant unless they choose to rescind it. Article Twenty-One is just the vote to recess to the annual town election, and to describe any ballot questions that you might have. If there are any ballot questions, we'll put that there, otherwise that piece will come off. There could be, there could be one more article. Remember last week, you approved a transfer of $10,000 from the CDVG account for the housing rehab program? When we last did this, we did an actual transfer by town meeting vote, we're exploring, Sandy Obena was exploring that to confirm whether or not we need a town meeting vote to do that, or whether Select Board's vote is sufficient, so if we do need it, we'll just add it.
Dan, you want to say something?
Thank you very much, my question was answered in the discussion, I appreciate the time.
Okay.
Ken, I just want to observe these. Article, uh, Twelve, or Thirteen, when will you use free cash to reduce the tax rate? What, the one, was that Thirteen?
That's, yeah, yes.
I mean, I know you have usually planned about $200,000, right?
Yes.
Consistently? I mean, if there's any, if there's any available free cash, I'm certain the citizens would appreciate us using it to reduce the tax rate.
Well, let's look at that. Take out your budget worksheet again, and see the actual numbers that have been suggested for that. And you go to page four, and go down to the second to the last block where it says free cash use.
One, two, three.
On page four, all the way to the bottom, there's a second to the last block, it says free cash use. And if you go over to the column that says fiscal year twenty-one, you can see what the, how we propose to spend the free cash. The first would be, we always set aside money for the snow and ice deficit, and it's typically just north of $30,000. Then there's $300,000 for the OPEB reserve, you see that number? $65,000 for the reserve fund, $200,000 to reduce the rate, and then $400,000 to be divided up among all of the stabilization accounts. Now, if you look in the middle box, it shows you what's going on with free cash, our free cash, certified free cash is $1.1 million, we're proposing to use $998,000, so that would leave a balance of $183,000.
Above and beyond what you've allocated for, the count, the count is on the right.
That's right.
Could we use that $183 to reduce the tax rate?
Yes, it can be reduced.
Only if we could.
But, one of the things you have to remember, and first is, DOR is typical, we don't know how free cash is going to rebound next year, so to the extent that you don't spend your free cash, I mean, the general recommendation is not to spend free cash on annual operating expenses, because it's like a one-time lump of money that you can use for special things. We realize that we have to use some, but the strategy has been to gradually reduce the amount we use in free cash. And in the coming fiscal year, you kind of need that free cash as a base to start off with. So those are some of the cautions against using too much free cash to reduce your rate.
Okay, I think, what you're saying, you just take it under consideration.
Yeah, you know, you've considered both.
If you think it's feasible, or half of it, if there's $183...
I mean, it's a discussion really between the Select Board and the Finance Committee, you know, as to how much free cash you use that's left there.
Yeah, but it's your decision, right?
Not really. It's my, it's my recommendation, but, you know, if you say you want to use a higher number, and you have a consensus on that, I'll put the higher number, and then it goes to the Finance Committee for reconsideration.
I'd like to see a little more in there if we could.
I think the board's betable to your suggestion of, probably use some of the $183 to reduce
Anyone else? Joe, do you have any, say if you want to use any of that to reduce it or not?
I guess the, the free cash balance of $183, Ken, just if you can just educate me on this, if we were to say half of that, so we're going to have free cash of $90,000, it's not a lot, not a big bucket, we don't know how that free cash is going to rebound next fiscal year.
Right. That's what my concern is, it might be a little slower than we think, things are slowing down, there's some rumors about illness.
Right. Although I'd love to reduce the tax rate, for sure, I just don't know how much would impact that is versus risk management moving forward of things that may come off that.
People may be slower paying their taxes.
So I'm just, just not sure.
If you look, you go to the front of that budget page, you can see how the free cash estimate was derived. It's not an estimate, it's the actual, actual calculations are done by our common accountant, and then they're confirmed by the department revenue. So you can see we had, at 6:30, 19, we had an undesignated fund balance of $1.3 million, but then we had to reduce the receivables, and the free cash, well, there was some free cash voted, but your receivable uncollected taxes. And then there's some deferred revenue that came in that increased that, so that's how the $1.18 million, so there's kind of your uncollectibles are...
I'm sorry, I'm lost here, Ken, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go right to the front, Joe.
Right to the front, okay.
Page one, right to the top of the page.
Got it, okay.
And you can see it starts with undesignated fund balance, I like to put that calculation in there.
That's helpful.
So you can see how it was done.
Should we just wait?
Well, maybe we should wait till we get closer to, we don't need to actually plug a figure in there until we go to, actually go to the town meeting, right?
Right.
That's a good idea.
Plus, the whole board will be back here by then.
Let's see where we are right before we...
Right, when we, when it, right up the explanation of the warrant articles, well, there'd be some, the Finance Committee will want the money articles settled by the time we, by kind of the end of January, when do they, got to go back and look at the schedule, last meeting. So we're going to want to wrap this up, remember, because all this gets printed up and goes into the, into the annual town report, which has to be done by the end of March.
Oh, fortunately, too, finances.
Yeah, Finance Committee.
We have a meeting on the sixteenth, right?
We have a meeting on the sixteenth, yeah. Our last meeting's on the nineteenth.
Has, CD RST hasn't sent us anything, drafts or any agreement amendments, any, any detail on that at all. I'm going to make a motion that that particular article is not on the warrant unless they have a document they can present to this committee before we determine if it goes on the warrant or not.
Okay.
Joe, what are we talking about here now? This thing that was done last year?
No, this, Article Twenty is updates the annual agreement for CD RST.
Yeah, but that, I think we have to take into consideration the letter they sent us after passing that article on July 25th.
No, there's actually more changes just to that one, because there's multiple things that they're going to change in the, in the agreement.
What is that going to be?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, you're talking apples and oranges, but we have to, unless they rescind it next Thursday night, that, we have to put this on here. Now, if they make some other changes down the road, well, certainly they have to send them to us for consideration.
What I'm suggesting is that they come to this board and educate us in our town about what those changes are in the regional agreement.
Any proposed changes?
Any proposed changes.
I agree with that.
Yeah, any proposed changes.
Did you motion, was?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, it's under discussion. What was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You will contact us, Joe?
Sure.
You'll contact us?
I'll mention at the seven-town meeting tomorrow that they need to get their horses and gear if they want to make changes to the amendment agreement.
Well, it's, it's almost too late now.
That's my point.
Yeah.
We told them back in November that we wanted a January, yeah, so...
We did. Anything else? Okay, we're all set on the warrant? Okay, number eight, update on the sale of the former Barden Farm. Ken, do you want to start this, or?
Yeah, I'll start it off. Everybody has a handout that our town treasurer, Don Fahey, gave me, so we can, we'll discuss this a little bit after our update, you want a conversation, that John Boyle sat in tonight in our town council, and we recall what the problem is with the sale of the Barden Farm. They just pulled off of the auction block four years ago now, because the agricultural preservation restriction extends into the town of Windsor. There's 148 acres in Dalton, and four acres in Windsor, and the Department of Agriculture objected to our sale of the tax title property, because they believe it suffers the agricultural preservation restriction, although we've never had any intent not to use that land for agricultural purposes. John and I ran into the Agriculture Commissioner last fall, we went down there for the AGRID opening, the bio, biofuel opening, and he agreed to follow up with us. So we finally, I finally got a conversation with him, and the essence of the conversation was, they still feel that our sale of the land violates the agricultural preservation restriction. They didn't really give us any good advice on how we should go about dealing with it. So, we don't really know how to deal with it, our attorneys are looking at our options under the law. One option is simply to sell the land as it is, and deal with the consequences of that. Another option is to ask the state legislature to make a change in the agricultural preservation restriction, which they can do, and the third is to file a formal request with, now we... and once the commissioner makes an official decision, we could appeal that to Superior Court. So those are our options right now. John, do you have anything?
Just by feeling for the phone conversations, from top to bottom, the commissioner, the vice commissioner, the department head, their lawyer, and somebody else, five of them.
Yeah, person who runs the agricultural...
Yeah.
Preservation restriction.
There's no doubt, no question. They were just stonewall on us. We had a lot, well, we considered a lot of viable suggestions. Can we do this? Could we do that? No, no, no. And pretty much the option that Ken just laid out, feel into the legislature, probably they would oppose it, by the way.
Yeah, I'm sure they would.
So that wouldn't happen.
I'm looking at it this way, if we sell it, it's still going to be in agricultural use and it'll probably be put to use instead of sitting there.
Right. Right, and you know, we said quite clearly, we don't, we're not asking to change the nature of the use.
No, I think they're misunderstanding what we want to do with it.
We want to put it back into agricultural use.
Dale said that if they, even though it's a minor thing, they agreed to that, four acres, 148 acres, minor thing, it was setting precedent for this and other places. Now, how often is this going to happen? But that's one of their rationales. Well, it could happen and we'd be setting the precedent to what they call divide and APR. But it's not dividing the APR.
No, we're not lifting the APR off.
Because all we're selling is property we own that has a lien on it. We probably sold property in the past that has a lien on it. It could be a sewer lien, a water lien, a transgressed property, trans, transferred property, no, transgressed property.
Right.
You know, a minor lien is in the hands of a farmer, not a big deal, that's what farmers are about.
They're going to put it to use instead of sitting there. I mean, the longer it sits there, the less likelihood it's ever going to get back to agriculture again.
I'll point out too that we, this board did vote to sell it.
Yeah.
And the only thing that was remaining is establish a price.
Right.
So if the, the point of the information I've given you came from the treasurer is this, if you decide to sell the land, just go ahead and sell it. We can sell it at a regular treasurer's auction. As a select board, you are the determiner of who is custodian of the property. Now, the treasurer customarily is custodian of tax title properties, but it's at your pleasure. So whoever is the custodian, let's assume it's the treasurer for a minute, will set up the auction like we normally do and we can sell the property and we can sell it subject to what we think is fair market value for the property. You know, John's done some investigation on that and has a fairly good handle on it. We could go out and have a formal appraisal. We know what we bought the Pines property for, which was $2,000 an acre. We know what we sold Town Forest for, and that was $1,000 an acre. So it's probably, you know, somewhere maybe south of $1,000 an acre. It doesn't have to be sold. So if you put it up for a regular auction and the prices don't come in where we want it, you pull it off the auction block.
That sounds good.
I'd say we go for $1,000 an acre.
Again, no problem with that, Bob, but I think it's important to point out that the assessors, I wouldn't look at all the cards, everything I gave you, Ken, but they got the total property appraised at $30,000. And the assessor pointed out to me that, yeah, we consider it useless property because of the APR, yeah, that's why it's so low. And that comes out to $200 an acre. But again, we paid 2,000 for the Pines and we sold up there close to 1,000, the Town Forest. So we're somewhere in between.
That goes back to being, I don't know, it was October, November, but it was when I was remote and we're looking at that card, it was so low because it's, where it is, it's not being used, but prior it was much higher.
Right.
So it should be based upon that higher value.
Absolutely.
Because that's the, the land use, once it is transferred, it's going to be at that level.
Do you remember what the higher value was?
I, I can't recall. It was significant.
More than a thousand?
I, I don't recall, but it was significant.
I, I, you know, I certainly would be unhappy if you got less than 900 or something an acre.
So I think we should look at what the value was before it went to where it is now.
But I do want it sold.
Sure. Well, I mean, I mean, trying to agree with Bob. I mean, a thousand dollars an acre seems like a medium range price.
I mean, somebody wants it bad enough.
Well, that's a start of numbers.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't sell for that, I mean, some future time, you could just have another auction.
Right.
So at a lower price if it doesn't sell.
There's no, no risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, it can also be sold under the, the normal procedures used in Massachusetts for selling this property. It's similar to an auction, but it's sealed bids. So, you know, you can do it either way, be it your pleasure, because you know...
What do you think could get the most money from, is that's what I want to do?
Maybe an auction, but I don't know.
A competitive auction. Yeah, 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 so...
And that's where we've done all the auctions in the past.
Taxed the property.
Yeah.
Typically done.
Highest bidder gets it.
So we can start, we can name a starting price, correct?
A minimum.
A minimum bid.
Yeah, I think you can. I think fair market value is a thousand, you start at a thousand, or you start at whatever.
Motion of the auction. Chairman, I move that we establish a minimum price of $1,000 per acre for the pending tax sale of the, what's known as the Barden property.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you, John.
Good work.
Ken, if we get that money for that, what do we use it for? Does it go back into the general town? Can we save it for future park use or...
I think it goes under the general fund. Doesn't mean it can't be appropriated out for specific use, but...
Town meeting, right?
Yeah, not town meeting appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the cable transfer franchise fee.
The chairman and I move that we transfer $27,809.88 from the town funds to the Dalton Community Cable Association.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second, is there any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, remarks to the select board. Anyone who's got anything?
Yeah, a, a quick thing, just got this from the, from the NPO. And Dalton Division Road, project cost above $1 million, blah, 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 blah. And it's in the engineering stage right now, 25% or plus of the engineering's been done and is scheduled for construction in the calendar years of 2023 and 2024. So I don't think anything's really changed here, again?
No.
That's what you had before?
I think so.
They just send me these update things here all the time. Joe?
Okay.
Anybody in Dalton? And evidently there is money, I don't know what the, what the plan is, nobody seems to know, but there is money cranked in there to do something with the intersection.
Good, that needs something done in there.
But I don't know, things go on a little bit, maybe another year or so. Is our engineering company doing this, Ken? GPI in Boston?
No, they, well, they did the preliminary engineering so that we got it on the list, but now I've got to, I got to get an RFP out there and hire a firm to start the formal design process.
Okay. Yeah, well, as soon as they started, we'd be chit-chatting with them, asking what they got and plans for that intersection.
Intersection, right. For both of them.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
So tomorrow night is a seven-town advisory meeting for CVRSD and we received a letter on February 3rd, which states the starting time at 6 o'clock, but yet the, the formal agenda on the CVRSD website says 6:30. So I'm assuming that's their open meeting time or open meeting number, so it's suggested to 6:30 start. And on the agenda for tomorrow is the CVRSD tenant budget and the regional agreement update discussion. And then the second thing is that on Thursday, CVRSD is reconsidering the motion they made on July 25th, which would restrict, which would restrict popular vote moving forward for any capital projects. So they're going to have that open discussion on Thursday and take a vote on whether or not to rescind that motion, so.
Thank you. Okay, items for future agenda. I'd like to add that one about the historical district and getting some information on that. All right, now, who, who would like to contact Louisa or somebody on the commission?
I'll do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, we need to do it before the town...
Yeah, they need to go pretty quick.
Yeah.
Try to get it here next week.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, that leads us to the announcements. The early voting will be available from Monday, February 24th, 2020, to Thursday, February 27th, 2020, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. in the office of the town clerk, Town Hall, on 462 Main Street. For further information or any questions, please call 413-684-6111, extension 14 or 15. End of vote. Okay. The town clerk would like to remind DOT residents that DOT licenses were due on January 1st. Information offering the option of licensing by mail was included in the annual town census form. Send the proper fees, proof of spating or neutering, and rabies documentation. These documents and fees can also be placed in a drop box on the South Carson Avenue. A $10 late fee is being charged as February 1st, as owners of unlicensed dog after that date must remember to add an additional $10 to their check. A $50 failure to license, a $50 failure to license fine will also be imposed as of April 1st to those owners whose dog remain unlicensed. For any questions or concerns, please contact the town clerk's office at 413-684-6111, extension 14 or 15. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton, the winter parking ban, which went into effect on November 15th, 2019, will be in effect till April 15th, 2020. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Town Hall and from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach Mark at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. I hold office at the appointments either in the Town Hall or at the Senior Center. Please, for further information or to schedule an appointment, call 413-684-6111, extension 11. Motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I move we adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Okay. Great.